Nevada, I've been out for twenty something years. The Nevada League of Cities is like married to SNCOG. I mean, because the stuff there is that I would be bringing to the COG to help along. But it was only three of us that signed up. Two cities dropped out, so it's just four of us. Las Vegas, Henderson, and Boulder City. And the other two dropped, the other three dropped out. And so somebody asked, is it one and done? And they said, no, they should come back, but they'll have to come back formally.
Okay.
But they should have stayed on. Yes. Yeah. Yeah. Somebody brought that up about a couple of other boys that they mentioned today. Hey, Steven. Good. I'm tired, but I always call Steven. Just like my son, I call him Steven. But yeah, it was really, 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 really good. And I liked the way that they had the panels and the new line. I was the only one asking questions, literally. Oh, yeah. Oh, the AI guy. They're, they're, I was, well, they, yeah. Oh, yeah. He did. It was a guy from India. And he could hardly...
We'd like to welcome those of you who are in the chambers and those of you who are joining us online to our city council meeting. This is Boulder City City Council Meeting for October 28th. Just in way of announcement, I'm Mayor Pro Tem Sheri Jorgensen, filling in for Mayor Hardy, who is attending League of Cities right now for Boulder City. And we thank him for that. We will call the meeting to order, and I'll do a confirmation of posting and roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. The agenda was posted in accordance with Nevada Open Meeting Law, and all members are present with the exception of Mayor Hardy, who, again, he is attending the Nevada League of Cities Conference.
Thank you. Tonight, we'll have our invocation by clergy Rodney Woodbury from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and after which we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. If we could all stand, please.
Our dear Father in Heaven, we are grateful for the opportunity to be gathered as a community and to have this city council meeting. We're thankful for the council and the staff members who run our city and who helped to make this place a beautiful place to live and a wonderful atmosphere where we can raise families and accomplish good things, where we can have jobs and work together for good solutions. Please send thy Spirit to be with those who will make decisions tonight and those who will speak and participate in other ways, that we can have, can find common ground and that we can have a spirit of understanding and love and of solutions to the issues that face us. Help us to build upon our diversity as well as our uniqueness and to be able to plan for the future and be able to see things clearly and have a vision for how to make our city better. We're thankful for the beautiful fall weather that we have. We're thankful for thy guidance in all things and pray that thou will be with us tonight and say these things in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to former Mayor Rodney Woodbury for wearing a different hat tonight and coming in to open our meeting with prayer. We will now move on to public comment. We don't have any public announcements, do we? Okay. To public comment, just a reminder that this time is available for you to come up and discuss the things that are on the agenda. So this is the portion where you will discuss the things that are on the agenda. You have three minutes' worth of time. Are there any in the chamber who would like to come up and make public comment? And if you'd like to phone in, that phone number is (702) 589-9629. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mayor Pro Tem and Council Bryn Delarmier, and I'd like to thank you for adding to the agenda the introduction of the bills for both the leash law and the pet breeding ordinance, which I know will be heard at the November 10th city council meeting. And I'd just like to express my support for both of those. Well, I actually hoped that the pet breeding ordinance could be banned, but I do appreciate that you're putting measures in place to make it pretty strict here in Boulder City. I was hoping that a couple of things could be stricter just in advance of the November 10th meeting, such as the permit for it. I know it's going, I hear it's going to be 250 instead of the 500 that was discussed. I think the zoning regulations were dropped. It was going to be on larger lots instead of any lots in the city. I know there are spaces that dogs, cats, whatever can be bred, need to be on spaces for it, but that doesn't allow for, you know, if my neighbor on one side is breeding pets, my neighbor on the other side can also be. And I think that was discussed in prior meetings, that could allow for a really loud situation. So I hope that's considered. And as far as the leash law goes, I hope that the verbiage for "under voice command" is removed because no matter how good somebody's dog may be, an owner may yell at their dog if there's thunder, if there are loud motorcycle pipes, if there are fireworks, if there's construction noise. A dog just simply can't hear their owner, so I hope that text is removed. And I hope that council will engage with the public on spaces for dogs to run off leash and hopefully fenced areas. One I'd like to suggest, that I walk by all the time and I only see off-leash dogs running around, I don't see it used for much else, is the north side of Broadbent Park along Fifth Street. And one thing that had been done in a former city that I lived in, Philadelphia, by Orianna Hill Dog Park, was actually a Christmas tree recycling program. After the Christmas season, everybody would drop off their naked trees. By a particular point, they would be wood chipped, thrown into the park, and it would smell like Christmas till about April of every year, so it's a great way to keep trees out of landfill. And it was, the wood chipper was free, donated free by a local hardware store. So it's a great, you know, it's a great way to sustain a tax-free way for dog owners to enjoy a dog park and also not have to reseed it all the time because dog pee just completely destroys grass from the high amounts of nitrogen in it. So I hope you will consider that, and thank you all very much. Thank you.
Is there anyone on the phone?
Public comment, go ahead.
Good evening. For the verbatim record, Fred Volz. Changes proposed in Item 5 are long overdue since Boulder City has been the outlier on animal and public safety concerning off-leash dogs in public spaces. Still, caution is warranted by some of the suggested and overly permissive language. Boulder City presently has two fenced off-leash areas for dog owners to use. It could create more, but it has not been a civic priority. There should be no off-leash dog areas in public spaces beyond fenced dog parks. Full stop. Our city's animal residents often receive short shrift when it comes time to allocate adequate public resources to meet their needs. A city animal shelter that depends upon resident donations to operate is no more acceptable than seeking resident donations to pay ongoing city employee salaries. As for Items Number Six and Seven, the professed need for reassurance from the state attorney general's office in accurately interpreting NRS 574.353's requirements failed to recognize or incorporate resulting derogatory impacts central to this community's well-being. Breeders' unwanted offspring become an additional drain on public resources since Boulder City has no formal animal rescue organization. The city, region, and country already have a glut of unwanted animals who must be cared for at public expense. Even euthanasia is an expensive proposition. No one has determined what the cost of medical and ongoing care for newly bred unwanted animals is to businesses or residents in the form of higher taxes needed. However, here's how Boulder City can minimize the derogatory impact of animal breeding activities in the proposed ordinance changes. First, reduce the number of dogs or cats possessed in any one household for breeding purposes to one, not three. Second, allow only one litter every five years, not every two years. Third, require annual reporting from the breeder to animal shelter personnel that tracks the bred animals for the duration of their lives and adjusts city fees accordingly. Fourth, state statute requires disclosure of a breeder license number in any advertising to sell animals. This has been omitted from the proposed wording. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chamber who would like to come make public comment at this time? And anyone else on the phone at (702) 589-9629? Okay, seeing no one else who would like to come up, we will move on for possible action of approval of regular agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move on to the approval of consent agenda. Do I have a motion for that?
Move to approve consent agenda.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oops, aye. Any opposed? Great, thank you. Okay, with that, regular business will begin, and we will start with a presentation by Michael Mays regarding community development.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Jorgensen and members of the city council. Michael Mays, your deputy city manager. So it's October, and this is the annual opportunity for me to present the activities of the Community Development Department to the city council and to the community. As you know, there are five primary functions of the department. Building permit inspections, planning and zoning, economic development functions of the city, code enforcement, and historic preservation. Starting with building permit and inspections, this shows for the last 10 years the number of building permits that have been issued by the city. And you will note that it's been fairly consistent. We had one anomaly in 2018 because of a utility project, but it reinforces that activity still occurs within the community and it's at a consistent level from year to year. We strive to achieve a goal of being able to turn around the initial building permit application submissions within a three-week period or 15 days. That's the red line represented at the top of this graph. The blue line shows what has been the average turnaround time, and so it shows that it is below that 15-day mark. And we're always looking for ways to improve that. You kind of see a dip and then an increase. We're going to be looking, moving forward, and I'll talk about a little bit later in the presentation, additional ways to help maintain a lower turnaround time for that first submission. This is just a snapshot of building permit activities. So for fiscal year '25, we had 1,760 inspections. We did 280 plan reviews. We issued 552 permits. And the permits issued had a valuation of $123 million. Moving on to planning and zoning. We very much appreciated the joint workshop earlier this year between the city council and the planning commission, giving staff direction on a major overhaul of Title 11. We've all recognized that there are dated elements of the code, there's best practices that need to be implemented, and so we're looking forward to taking that feedback and moving forward and bringing an updated code to the city council within the next year. We also continue to look for ways to address issues within the code itself. Not only Title 11, but the remainder of the city code. The most recent example was with massage therapists and cleaning up that language and bringing it into compliance with state law. Our growth control ordinance says that we cannot issue more than 120 new residential permits each year. So you can see with the graph of the last 10 years of the construction years that the green bar represents that 120 permits. You will note that with the blue, which represents actual residential permits issued, that we are well within compliance with the growth control ordinance on a year-to-year Moving on to economic development. There were several activities that our economic development coordinator, Rafi Fasekjen, undertook. He provided support and guidance to 241 businesses and startups over the past year. He does the RDA grant administration. He helped the public works and utility departments on two major infrastructure projects that occurred over the last year. The 12KV electoral upgrade along Nevada Way and working with those businesses to help minimize disruptions between the work and their business activities, as well as the Nevada Way reconstruction in the downtown. He also oversees the Pacer AI data that lets us know the number of visitors that are coming into Boulder City during special events. This is a reflection of the investment utilizing RDA funds in local businesses. We continue to encourage and support businesses to take advantage of these RDA funds so that they reinvest in their business and their properties, which then benefit all of the taxpayers and the city and the other jurisdictions. We do note that we've seen an increase in the retail vacancy rate within Boulder City compared to Las Vegas Valley. As you can see with the chart, you've seen a decline with Las Vegas Valley, where you've seen an uptick in Boulder City. And so we're always looking for ways to help promote vacant properties within the community, and that's a role that our economic development coordinator does, to help put property owners in touch with prospective businesses and new owners. This shows the impact of special events within our community. You'll see the average weekend, it's the dash line that hovers around 13,000 visitors. So on any typical weekend, we have 13,000 visitors coming from the outside into our community, supporting local businesses and taking advantage of our local activities and outdoor venture activities. But with these special events, you'll see a significant increase. This just reinforces the value in these events in our community and the investment the city council makes in providing special event grant applications to help promote these Moving on to code enforcement, we're always trying to work with property owners to bring them into compliance. And so you can see comparing fiscal year '24 to '25, the dark blue shows the number of closed cases or percentage of closed cases. Ninety-three percent in the last fiscal year and 95% in the most recent fiscal year. And so, again, it's important to try to work with property owners to bring them to compliance with our codes and with the new property maintenance code that is helping with that Historic preservation. We continue to work on implementation on the historic preservation plan that was recommended by the Historic Preservation Commission and adopted by the city council. We're working on additional outreach opportunities to the community about the benefits of the historic district and the rules and regulations. We want to strive to inform residents about the historic district and those regulations and encourage them to come see the city staff well in advance of contemplating improvements so that we can help facilitate that. And in fact, Nikisha Lyon, our city planner, is working on an outreach effort for all the property owners within the district to set up a town meeting, and then we would have an opportunity to educate and inform them about the historic preservation district, the grants, and other resources. And then we work closely with the public works department. They've done a phenomenal job with the investment in the historic water filtration plant, taking advantage of the $200,000 CCCHP grant to be able to restore that and allow the public access to that building. This chart shows our continued progress on the goals within the historic preservation plan with the high priorities. Those are 100% complete, and we're working to finish the medium and low priorities within the plan. Twelve out of the 17 strategies have been complete so far. Looking to the next year, we're excited that we will be bringing into place a new full-time building official, actually, next month. And this really helps with our customer service efforts in several ways. Number one, this individual will be able to do more plan reviews in-house, which will help to speed up the turnaround time in responding back to customers. But just as importantly, having a full-time building official that is available to support contractors and property owners, to help guide them with the construction process so that they can submit plans that the city can approve to allow them to make the improvements they want to make within our community. As I mentioned earlier, we're going to be focused on that major Title 11 rewrite, that's the zoning ordinance, that we believe will be helpful in helping facilitate quality development within the community, and then, of course, continued support to our local Striving for excellence and continuing to improve customer service is one of our department's primary goals. And one of the ways we get to hear back from the community on how well we're doing is when the public fills out the customer service survey. Every employee, their signature on their emails provides a quick and convenient link for them to connect to that. And with that input and feedback, we appreciate hearing from our customers about how well we're doing. And I just wanted to quickly share some of the feedback we've received in the last six months. Staff was willing to meet in person immediately, incredibly helpful and knowledgeable. Everyone at Boulder City City Hall is very friendly. Lee was very thorough and pleasant to deal with. Michelle was so kind and professional. Mr. Patrick Richardson was informative, courteous, and responsive to my concerns and was knowledgeable and respectful. Estelle was great. She helped me out and was very pleasant. Rafi was extremely professional, helpful, and responsive to my questions. He's an excellent representative of the community. I can't thank the community development staff enough for their support, not only to be focusing on customer service... to be focusing on customer service and striving for excellence. But as you well know, over the last year and a half, I've been wearing multiple hats. And I've relied on the staff even more so during that time. And I very much appreciate their support and their hard work. And with that, I can answer questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments at this time? Councilwoman Booth?
Sorry. Construction permits do we issue? I don't just mean for an AC, but something to build out, like a commercial building to rehab it and bring it up to code? And how many houses do we do a year?
So, we can go back to the slide that shows the number of new residential permits. But if you're asking about remodels, I'd have to go back and look at the data to find out that. So...
I saw that one. I didn't know if you had an answer to that, so I apologize.
Oh, sorry.
Is that new? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to go back to this slide. So, this is the new, number of new residential permits per year. But yeah, so the roughly 550, that's a combination of everything from a water heater to a residential remodel to a commercial remodel.
Okay. And I guess of the allotments, I didn't know the answer to this. So, an allotment committee, do they just do homes, like the 24 homes we saw, or do they also do construction?
So, they do residential units. So, that could be an apartment. That could be a motel unit. Or most commonly, it's new residential homes.
Okay. So, if it's a motel or condo, so if you rehab it, does that consider it new? Because I just know a lot of times they bring it up and say, "This is a year built" when they get done. So, that, does that go through allotment?
That's a good question. No. If it's an existing dwelling unit, it doesn't have to go through the allotment process. In addition, if somebody had a single-family home, they demolished it and rebuilt, that wouldn't require a new allotment because there was an existing single-family home there.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Councilmember Asters?
Yes. Thank you, Michael, for all you do. I attended the Nevada League of Cities and with the mayor and city manager. And literally, everyone who spoke or came up talked about Boulder City and how the events that we have down here, somebody talked specifically about the parade delight show during Christmas. So, we know that Boulder City is well-known from outside inside. On your annual allotment page, however, it looks like we're low in people moving in. Is that what that is with allotments?
Well, the allotments, they're a reflection of new residential construction.
Is there any reason why it's so low? I mean, has that been looked at? I know we're a city that want slow growth, low growth. But it just seems like the numbers are really, really low for Boulder City.
The main, yeah, sorry. The main, the main control and driver of that is there isn't a lot of vacant land in Boulder City that isn't owned and controlled by the city. So, there's not a lot of private vacant land. And so, where would new land that would be available for residential development occur? It would be with the sale of city-owned land and that requires a vote of the people. So, that's really the main influence and factor in the number of new residential dwelling units each year.
Okay, thank you. And also, I was glad to hear you said that you're going to hold quarterly town hall meetings or just that a meeting is coming up to be able to speak with the historic district folks that live there?
Yeah, we're planning a meeting over the next several months. And we're always looking for new ways at outreach to the property owners and residents within the historic district.
Do you think Courtney would be, or Ms. Mooney would be in attendance in those meetings?
Yeah, we would envision having her there. And in fact, we're, we're looking at a breakout session so that if folks want to learn more about what's a contributing property and a non-contributing property, they can go to that table and learn that. If they want to learn about historic preservation grants, they could go to another table and learn about that. We want to make sure that we get all the information available to those residents so they have it accessible and can utilize it as property owners within the historic district.
Yeah, I think outreach is so important, especially that is a jewel in town. I make people come here to see those homes. And if they're, you know, contributors and everything looks nice, it's, I think, just a proud area for Boulder City. So, I'm glad to hear that you're going to be meeting with those residents. The water filtration facility, you said you are, want to conduct tours there or have it open as in some type of a venue? How, what you're thinking on the historic water filtration building?
Well, first off, I want to give a shout out to the public works department. They have done phenomenal work in restoring the building, providing access, bringing the plywood off the windows, and now light can enter in there. They've extended power into the building. And so, as an example, we were able to open it up on historic preservation day this past May to the public. And for the first time, they could actually see the inside of the building. And Public Works Now is working on finalizing the painting to finish the project. So, we'll be looking for ways to allow the public access to the building, whether that might be some type of an event or a tour, so that people can better understand the history of our community.
Okay, thank you. And the last one, I just want to thank you on the customer service survey. I like hearing the input from outside. We could sit here and talk about how good Boulder City is, but until you hear it from people outside coming in, especially our residents, it's important. So, thank you for putting that survey out there. The only thing I would say is that I would probably spread it out a little bit more than just the Facebook BC&amp;B page. And there is a way to share that to other local groups so they could actually see the kudos that are coming in. So, and that's something we could talk about later. But that's the next step, I would think, for that survey. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lotman?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. As a matter of fact, Councilmember Booth, I was writing some notes about the building permits versus the allotments and the numbers. And I did some quick math with my handy-dandy calculator on my phone here. And I tallied up the last 10 years for each. Building permits equaled about 6,312, give or take if I hit a wrong button. So, that's for 10 years. And it's, and it's important to remember, and I'm going to make just clarification for folks that are in the chamber or listening. A building permit doesn't necessarily mean it's a building going up. It's all work that requires a permit. If you're renovating electric or plumbing or certain parts of your drywall that exposes certain sections, or if you're doing an addition, so many things require a permit. And I think it's important to know. And so, if we take the 6,312 and the 237 allotments, and not necessarily all of those were used to build a new residential structure, right? Sometimes they expire. And so, we, I don't know, I guess you could dig deep and see how many of those were actually used. But certainly, compared to the 6,312 building permits and then 237 potential new structures, the comparison is quite low for new, for new construction. So, there's a lot going on. And, excuse me, that would make sense, given the age of many of the homes in town. They need to be upgraded or renovated or, in some case, added on to. And all that requires a building permit. So, I think that's important to remember. And that really, and I don't know, maybe you would comment on this, the amount of, at least on the construction side, new construction is way easier than renovation. And so, I would ask on your side, when a new structure is going up compared to inspections and plans review for renovations, is there a comparative amount of time that the staff is required on each?
I would say that with new construction, there's a lot more inspections involved. But with existing, there's a lot of upfront work. Understanding the existing building codes, working with the city on the improvements you want to make to that structure. And that's where, especially since we have a lot of owner builders within our community, having the full-time building official to work with them is going to be very important.
Yeah, indeed. And we acknowledge and appreciate the efforts there. And as that comes to fruition as planned next month, we look forward to welcoming a new building official here. And I would just say that in, in support of the positive comments, when I had an owner builder project recently, to come here upfront and to speak with the individuals in the community development department adds a clarity of expectation. And I think a lot of times, people might put the cart before the horse and then come talk to people here and then, you know, throw up their hands like, "Wait a second, I've done all these things." Well, if you had to come and talk to, talk to community development first, maybe it would have saved some time and energy. And I'll really endorse that, that effort. And I found the folks in there to be very helpful and knowledgeable as far as the process and the codes and the ordinances that relate to it. So, very helpful. And that's certainly, I think, a good way to start off a project. So, anyway, we have about 500,000 plus in RDA funds dispersed as the chart had issued there. And we have a pretty substantial balance there. And it ends in just a matter of a few years. And council has that on our agenda for the strategic plan to consider how we could either internally come up with projects that can be applied to that. Or are there any coming down the, down the line that we're aware of that are helpful to our historic, our business or commercial district to disperse some additional funds in the, in the relatively near foreseeable future?
Well, we're going to continue to promote the grant programs to our local businesses. But we're also exploring the possibility of converting the Boulder Creek Pavilion into a permanent facility utilizing RDA funds.
Right. That would be an internal, and I didn't mean just council, but staff internal idea. So, yeah, that's, that's one that we've come up with so that we make sure those funds are utilized productively before, before the expiration. Okay. Thank you for the strides that have been made in striving for excellence and in making customer service a priority. I think we've made fantastic strides in the recent years. But there are still folks that have the one-offs, hopefully, or the less offs than, than have in the past. But I hope that we're mindful of those folks that are expressing frustrations to the city and what we might be able to do to help, you know, curb that type of experience for, for the other folks that might not have such a positive experience and be proactive in finding out what those might be. So, anyway, thank you. Yeah, and your staff has stepped up greatly. And kudos to them. And thanks for wearing the multiple hats. So, that's all I have, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. One of the benefits, I think, of going last is that everyone asks the questions that you wanted to ask, and you, you get a lot of information. I too would like to thank you for all the hats that you've been wearing. I guess I didn't introduce you as deputy city manager because you've had so many since I've been here that sometimes you could forget, right? And which just simply means that you have a really good view of what's happening in our city or have had the opportunity to. So, I, I think one of the things that we see here in the community development area is there are not just multiple hats that you were wearing, but multiple things that they do within there. And I did have a couple of questions that weren't kind of asked. You did say you were going to talk a little bit about the reviewing, the times kind of creeping up for the reviews and maybe a strategy or two that we're going to implement to get that back down again so that that graph isn't continuing to climb up?
Thank you for the question. So, we're, in the past two years, we've had a part-time building official that's also been doing inspections. We haven't had the opportunity to have an individual overseeing the entire process, looking at where maybe building permit application is lagging or lacking information. Now, we're going to have somebody who's going to be proactive, overseeing that process, proactively responding if a permit is not moving forward, engaging with the other departments to help facilitate that. And so, that's where I see a great opportunity to take that graph. And I hope I'll be here before you next year, and I'll be able to show that it's gone back down.
That's great. Thank you. Because I knew you'd have an answer to that. And then, you asked the allotments. I was going to ask. So, with those, even though we saw such low numbers, I think just because there's an allotment given doesn't mean there was a home built, right?
Correct.
Okay. And I just know that a huge concern for us is our retail areas that are empty at this time. And I know that we've put forward some awesome efforts and kudos to your individuals in your office to be able to make the corridor, especially as we come into town with the 12 KV and doing the new, thank goodness it's done, parking, almost done, down there. What is it, because we're clearly not trending in the way that the valley is trending as far as retail space. What do you see, or is there anything that you see that we could do that could help incentivize or do anything to help people come?
I think the more tourists that we can bring to the community, whether it's through special events, or we're looking to the Southern Nevada River Museum and that opening next year, the Chamber of Commerce's Adventure Center, those types of venues are going to draw a lot of people to our community. And they're going to support our local businesses. And that's going to get the attention of other retailers, restaurants, that will look to Boulder City to open a business. And so, we want to foster those types of opportunities to encourage additional reinvestment.
That's a great point. That, that base number's going to climb, hopefully, with the opening of those as the number of people coming into our community during that time. What, this is just my personal question. What constitutes a closed case for code enforcement? How do you consider it closed? Is it resolved? Is it just discussed?
No, it's the code enforcement officer has worked with that property owner to bring it to resolution.
Okay, so, resolved. So, that's a high number, 95%. That's pretty good, right? And then, water filtration building, you said you see it being finished, completely finished, the project, or just the parts that we have the grants for?
To clarify, we were able to utilize a total of $500,000 to do several improvements to the building that have now allowed us to open it up and to allow greater public access. It's not completely finished. There's an elevator that doesn't work. There's not readily access, access to the second floor. But there's a lot more we can do with it today than what we could do a year and a half ago.
Will that be discussed with the historic preservation committee possibly for what could be done with that property for outreach to the community and/or beyond?
Yeah, absolutely. And in the past, the historic preservation commission has made as part of their historic preservation day, the opportunity for tours to occur there.
Because I'd really like to see it have more opportunity for viewing if we were able to put that kind of money through grants or that kind of time into it. Like you said, it's a significant part of our history. And I just was wondering if there's a future plan or a place where people will be making a future plan on how that's going to happen?
Yeah, absolutely. Part of our obligation with the $200,000 grant from the state is to utilize the building to provide access for our citizens and the public.
Great. And very lastly for me is, you said 12 of 17 goals met for historic preservation. Well, I know that we have a five- Well, I know that we have a five-year plan. Is this a plan that has a timeframe or is this just an open-ended?
No, it's a five-year plan. And so we're on the back end of that plan and we want to complete those goals within the next year.
Okay. I too want to say thank you. When I first started running for office, I would say most people that I met had not much good to say about the building permit process. And for the most part, that narrative has changed and I see that you continue to work in that direction and I'm appreciative of it. And I do see Rafi's outreach to the businesses helping and look forward to him continuing to do that so that we can open up some of those areas down there and make them available. So thank you very much. Is there any more discussion or questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll be moving on to item number four, five, and six, which will be the bill portions of the agenda. In these, we will be doing introductions. Do I have an introduction for bill number 2088?
I'll introduce bill number 2088 and waive the reading except for title.
Thank you. Bill number 2088, an ordinance of the City of Boulder City, Nevada, amending Title II, Department's Chapter Five, Police Department, to modify the responsibilities of the Police Department, including the requirement to establish a voluntary mounted police unit. This matter will be discussed at the November 10th City Council meeting.
Thank you. Moving on to item number five, do I have an introduction for bill number 2089?
I'll introduce bill 2089 and waive the reading except for title.
Thank you. Bill number 2089, an ordinance of the City of Boulder City, Nevada, amending Boulder City Municipal Code Title VII, Police Regulations, Chapter Three, Animal Control, to remove the Supervision and Control Exception to the Prohibition on Animals Being at Large Unless in a Designated Area and amending Title VII, Police Regulations, Chapter Five, Public Land Use to Provide for Civil Penalties for Related Violations. This matter will also be considered at the November 10th City Council meeting.
Thank you. And the final bill introduction, bill number 2090. Do I have an introduction?
I'll do that. I'll introduce bill number 2090, amending Title VII.
And waive the reading.
And I'll waive the reading.
Thank you. Bill number 2090, an ordinance of the City of Boulder City, Nevada, amending Boulder City Municipal Code Title VII, Police Regulations, Chapter Three, Animal Control, to create a Breeders Permit and establish regulations for the breeding of dogs and cats and make conforming changes to Title Four, Business Regulations, Chapter One, Business Licenses, Section 22, License Classifications and Fees. This matter will be considered at the November 10th City Council meeting.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. At this time, we'll move on to regular business. We'll move on to item number seven. The City Attorney, Brittany Walker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. I'm here to present to you item number seven. This is a Business Impact Statement regarding the proposed ordinance to regulate dog and cat breeding within the city per NRS Chapter 237. Whenever the city is going to consider a policy or law that will impose a burden upon a business or directly restrict the formation of a business, the city is required to prepare a Business Impact Statement and present notice to those potential businesses or existing businesses of the proposed changes and give them an opportunity to provide comment. Once the comments are received, the city prepares the Business Impact Statement that delineates questions and answers questions that are set forth in NRS Chapter 237 and provides a summary of the comments we received so that we can better assess the potential impact to businesses and mitigate any impacts. So the city has completed that process. In the packet, there is the Business Impact Statement. The handout tonight is just a signed version of the same statement that's in the packet. We only received, we've received a comment from the Chamber of Commerce that there wasn't anticipated to be an impact to any of their businesses. We also received several comments just opposing the regulation of breeding generally, but we did not receive any comments from businesses that reported any negative impact. So with that, available for any questions.
Are there any questions?
Just pointing out that the costs are less than, the anticipated costs are less than the anticipated revenue according to number four and five. So I think that's a good thing and since it's a Business Impact Statement, we're talking finances here, that's worth noting in here that we did put provisions in place so that, depending on how the discussion of the bill turns out, but that we're going to have cost-neutral essentially. So, thanks.
That's the hope, yep. Thank you. So it's asking if we would approve, does that take a motion and a second for approval? Yes. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve Business Impact Statement.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. We'll move on to item number eight and we'll have City Clerk Tammy McKay introduce that.
Our regularly scheduled meeting for November 11th actually falls on Veterans Day this year. So per City Council rules, they have the authority to make a motion to reschedule any meeting. Prior history, we have always moved the Tuesday meetings. If it interferes with the observance of a holiday or election day, we move it to the Monday prior. So that's what we're requesting, that the regular council meeting be moved from November 11th to November 10th. It will remain at the same time at 5:00 PM.
Thank you. Are there any questions or discussion on that? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to move the meeting from November 11th to November 10th.
Great. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Okay, now we're going to move on to the last public comment section of the meeting. This one can be pertaining to things that are also not on the agenda. If you do come up and you're in the chamber, if you could write your name down, say your name, that would be great. And those of you who are wanting to call in, you can call in at 702-589-9629 and you have three minutes. Anyone in chamber? Great. Anyone on the phone? Okay, seeing no one on the phone, no one in chamber wanting to do public comment, we'll move to City Council Report. Councilwoman Asher?
Start with me?
Yes.
Okay. So I've been a busy little beaver today. I had two board meetings. One is still ongoing, which the mayor and the city manager is at, and that's the Nevada League of City Conference. It's going really well. Like I said, Boulder City was well-received. I'll give a more in-depth briefing on what went on that meeting, but just some of the topics, so you would know, was political climate, federal legislative update, a three-minute municipal updates from each municipality, which was really good. Navigation, local policy priorities, state crisis report, present and future energy needs, that was really interesting. Navigation, or navigation, navigating Nevada's aviation systems. And that was really interesting because they were looking to futuristic things. And if you're old enough, like I am, you remember the Jetsons, well, that's what they're proposing, which, you know, they have the little robots or whatever, or the UAVs flying around with nobody in them, unmanned aerial vehicles, well, they're looking at that. So just looking into the future. So that was pretty interesting. And then Navida did an AI smart city report and they were pretty sharp. Their presentation was slick. It just had so many questions from everybody on that one. Then emergency management. And obviously, the fire that we had here with the batteries came up and they actually put a good light on that of how we handled it. So that was really good. And they went, talked about ongoing emergency management and how Clark County is ready to, for anything to happen, you know, in emergency if something happens, that we need to be prepared for that. Then they had the battery energy storage conversation. Governor Lombardo came and he did his remarks, giving us updates on his accomplishments and bills that were passed. And then the biggie was the housing solution for growing communities, the need for houses and homeless. And then there were vendors there. I also attended the Southern Nevada City of Government and which was, what's neat about that, it's a meeting that's taking place of the SNRPC that's closing out and this City of Government is taking over. Everything that we talked about at the Nevada League of Cities, the COG is interested in. So we were talking at the last council meeting how we would position ourselves in the COG and today we got to see how much we're needed. And we're there for, I forget the amount of what it is per year, but it's a very, very small amount to have a seat at that table. And it just showed the connection between us, North Las Vegas, well, Clark County altogether. So those were the two meetings that I attended today. Can't give you too much update because the City of Government won't stand up really until January and then you'll have to decide who's going to be the representative from our body there to represent Boulder City and I'll be able to give you more updates.
Councilmember Booth?
Well, if you were in Boulder City, we had an exciting weekend and it was so much fun. Chautauqua, we had a reception and the people opened up their home and fed us and it was very, very nice and I hope everybody goes next year. Then there was a block party downtown and I think that was well-received. There was dogs down there, kids down there, people in costumes, people just dressed regularly. And it was just a lot of fun with the spook house. So, gosh, it was amazing, I think. And then we had a gala at Emergency Aid and I want to thank my friend Andy Girro for purchasing a pallet of meat for the emergency aid. And at the same time, there was two wonderful people, I don't know what their names are, but they purchased freezers for emergency aid. And we need three, they purchased two that we needed. And I thought, what a wonderful gift because you get to give to the whole community.
Six thousand apiece.
And then also I attended my workforce meeting today and I hope people would get involved with workforce. If you're looking for a job and you don't have any education and you need some help, that's what workforce is all about. They just got another $3 million to train EMTs. And so if you're looking to be an EMT and you can't afford to go to school, you might contact workforce. And workforce is here in Boulder City at the library. So all you have to do is call in there and find out what kind of jobs they have training for and what they're offering. And I know a lot of our teachers are offering to help with even babysitting for those moms and dads to be able to get their credentials as a teacher. So I'm going to try to get somebody from workforce to come down and share what all they really do for Boulder City. But it is amazing and it really encourages people and gives them a lift up, I think. And so I really appreciate that. And that's all that I have.
Councilmember Walton?
Thank you. I don't have any updates from my committees, unusually, since our last meeting. I will thank you for the shout-outs. I normally avoid those, but I did have a chance to attend the Chautauqua this weekend as well, which our family are big fans of. And so shout-out to them and if you get a chance to support them and participate. It's a great community event. I want to remind everybody that when we do bill introductions as a council, it's just an introduction of a summary of the language that has occurred in open meeting by council. It by no means is a summary of what's expected to be passed or any anticipation that it will be. I think that's very important to know when bills are introduced. The discussion really can range from minor changes to major overhauls. So that's one item I wanted to make sure to address. And the other one had to do with public comment about reaching out. It's hard to know which of all of our 16,000 roughly constituents are interested in which topics. And so, and various meetings can only host a tiny fraction of who those folks might be. So I encourage everybody, the council member's contact information is readily available at bcnv.org under Government, City Council. And I'll tell you, my email is swalton@bcnv.org and my phone number is 702-303-8214. I always respond and I always look forward to hearing from council, or from community members. So if any item on the agenda of interest or any item within the city that you have interest in, I'm available and I know my fellow council members, the mayor included, who's not here, are also available and willing to reach out back to you. So please don't hesitate, it's not a bother. I've heard that a lot. I don't want to bug you. Please, that's why we're here. It's not a bother. We're doing this intentionally to represent everybody in the community. So that's all I have, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Just a couple of things that I was going to talk about. First off, had an opportunity to go to the fire station, have pancake breakfast, and it was wonderful to see the community out, especially the kids getting to look at the trucks and try on some of the gear. It was a great opportunity to interact and support our community. Thank you to Boulder City Aid and those who helped with the gala and/or went to it. I know that it matters to them because it provides funding for them to be able to provide funding for those who are in need in our community. So thank you for those who reached out, purchased freezers and food and things that were available to be able to be purchased. A little shout-out to Boys and Girls Tennis. They took state at Boulder City High School this last weekend, so a shout-out to them. And Girls Regional for, and I hope I'm not leaving any teams out because I know I'll hear about it, but for volleyball is currently, they won their game Monday, they're playing on Wednesday. And we love our high school team because that's what small communities love. It was great to see everyone out supporting them. A little heads-up, it's Halloween Friday. It doesn't just bring the people from our community in, it seems to bring half of Henderson in. And they love coming here, which is great. It's one of the ways that we can share with the people who we are and how we are. So, but just keep your eyes out for the little ones and their parents sometimes and make sure things are good. And did you have one more thing?
I do have one more thing, I forgot. So nearly 500,000 Nevadans receive SNAP, that's Supplemental Nutrition Assistant Program benefits. Due to the current government shutdown, many may not receive their benefits in November. Boulder City residents who are forlorn from the US government jobs rely on SNAP benefits. Or if you recently lost your income, help may be available from area agencies. These benefits are crucial for many families, including children, older adults, and people with disabilities. For resources available in Boulder City and Clark County, please visit bcnv.org backslash help, H-E-L-P, today, T-O-D-A-Y. I don't think that's part of it. I think she just put that on the end. It's visit bcnv.org backslash help. Thank you.
Great, thank you. That's important. Just a thank you to the council individuals sitting up here. And as Councilmember Walton said, I know that we have very responsive council at this time that is happy to talk with you and to share with you in your concerns or even if you have something really nice to say, that's always nice too, right? To hear some of that. And thank you to all of you who serve in the community at large that keep us abreast of what's happening in Clark County. So thank you. And with that, our meeting's adjourned.